I call the July 25, 2017, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council of Water. And I'll ask my colleagues to stand for the invocation, and then the invocation will be given by Reverend Peter Rana of Redeemer Lutheran Church. Then I'll ask the audience to stand with council as Councilman Bill Moody leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Sir.
Let us pray. Gracious God, we come before you and we thank you for the blessing of a community that works together, that sees the needs and it tries to fulfill them. We ask you to bestow on these men and women before us wisdom and courage and everything that they need to be good and effective leaders to provide us with a safe place and a happy place so that we might pursue our interests. We ask us all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Well, next have electronic roll call, and please indicate your presence to tonight's meeting by voting yes. And Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. The next item of business is the approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have three sets of meetings, minutes. The minutes of a call meeting of July 10, 2017, the minutes of a call meeting of July 11, 2017, and the minutes of a regular meeting, July 11, 2017. What is your pleasure?
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, and it's been duly seconded. Ready for the question, all in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
The next item is a special presentation. It's a proclamation that I'll read pertaining to National Night Out. And if Chief Chapman and Leticia Branch would join me down in the front. National Night Out is August 1, and we have a proclamation that I'll read tonight, and it reads, "City of Portsmouth Proclamation. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime and drug and violence prevention program on August 1, 2017, entitled National Night Out. And whereas the 34th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for Portsmouth to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime and crime prevention efforts. And whereas the city of Portsmouth plays a vital role assisting the police and sheriff departments through joint crime, drug, and violence prevention here in Portsmouth and is supporting National Night Out 2017. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Portsmouth be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime, drugs, and violence in our neighborhoods. And whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, and Neighborhood Watch are important themes of the National Night Out program, now therefore I, John L. Rowe, Jr., Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 1, 2017, as 2017 National Night Out in Portsmouth, and do call upon all citizens of Portsmouth to join the Portsmouth Police and Sheriff's Departments and the National Town Watch Association in supporting and participating in this great event." And I think I just lost the mic, but I'm not sure. And what I'd like to do is give you this proclamation and ask you to tell not only council but the public about this great event that we'll have here on August 1st. Let's use this lecture.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, Dr. Patton. It is an honor to be here, and I thank you for the proclamation honoring National Night Out. As you know, this is a nationwide event, and in years past, we have allowed citizens to participate on a day of their choosing, usually in October. And I thought it was important to bring this back to the normal day, which is the first Tuesday of August, where the nation celebrates National Night Out. And so with that, I tasked my great crime prevention officer, Ms. Tisha Branch, to take on this task and bring our communities together. So I'm going to allow her to talk about her initiatives and what she's done to bring our community together. Thank you.
Thank you. As far as Chief Chapman goes, just as she stated, when she gave me the task to change what we've done in the past, last year National Night Out was not as big because we did leave it up to the community as to what they wanted to do. And we only had two neighborhoods that did anything, any events at all. This year, we do have 20 events going on in 20 neighborhoods. And I will list the neighborhoods so everyone will know, which is Cavalier Manor, West One Apartments, Westmoreland Civic League, Fourth Baptist, Midtown, Mount Herman, Grove Park, Green Acres, South Side Gardens, Wilson Ward, Old Town, West Side Christian Church, Brighton Prentice Park, Locksley Place, Redeemer Lutheran, Cavalier Baptist Church, Port Norfolk, West Park View, and Craddock. And we will be starting in Old Town, we will be ending in Craddock. And what we're doing is, the police department as a whole, we will be filtering every neighborhood, letting them see us, building the relationship between community and law enforcement. And what we're doing is, we ask the community, the civic leagues, I went to Neighborhood Watch meetings, and just ask them to partner with any business, any church in their neighborhood, and do something together. That's why you heard that some of the names were churches and not neighborhoods, because they're the ones that are hosting it. And what we're doing is facilitating. I just go out, make sure that they have what they need from us, make sure we know what they're doing, and that we can help them as much as we can. This is the 34th year that National Night Out has been in effect, and we have 10,000, over 10,000 communities nationwide participating, and we are one of those. So for the city of Portsmouth, we're just trying to make this the biggest event that we can, and so far, this is the biggest.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Chief. I applaud your efforts, and I can assure you that it will be 105 degrees on August 1st.[519.62][519.62](Laughter) It always was. But just to, I'm sitting here thinking, if there are 20 events going on in, what, a three-hour period?
Yes, ma'am.
There's no way for all of you folks who want to see your council members at your event, there's no way we're all going to get to 20 events in three hours. We're pretty good, but I don't think we're that good. But we'll do our best.
Well, thank you, Ms. Simmons. And I will say, we've had the same request for our chief to be at every event. And I've explained to them that I can only split her, but so many ways, so she will get to as many as she can. And the ones that she cannot, our assistant chiefs and myself will represent her the best that we can.
We want to thank you for your leadership and what you're doing on this important night. And because we have so many venues across the city, there's no excuse for broad, wide participation by all of our citizens. There's an event nearby.
Yeah.
And I encourage all of our citizens to get a wristband that celebrates National Night Out.
Yes.
And where can they get these?
They can see one of us at one of the events. So they need to come up and see us at one of the events.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next item of business is item, Agenda Item 17290, which is a consideration on second reading of a resolution pertaining to a use permit. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the resolution, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution granting a use permit, UP 1703, to Safe Harbor Behavioral Health Care LLC to operate a residential and outpatient drug and alcohol treatment facility at 2700 London Boulevard.
In order to have this before us for our consideration, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move.
We have a motion that's been duly seconded. Any discussion? Here are none. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And we, the motion carries six with one abstention, and that's Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke. And Madam Clerk, for the record, would you indicate that in the minutes?
Yes, sir. We have her statement on five.
The fact that she had refused herself from this matter?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Which brings us to Item 17315, which is the adoption of an ordinance accepting a donation. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
An ordinance accepting an appreciation, with appreciation, a donation of $6,000 from Green Acres Presbyterian Church and appropriating said funds in the, to the FY 2018 Grants Fund for use by the Department of Social Services to support operations of the services intake unit.
In order to have this matter before us, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Here are none. We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to Agenda Item 17316, which is the acceptance of a grant by way of an ordinance to appropriate and to accept the funds. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $556,729 from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2018 Grants Fund to provide funding to operate local probation and pretrial services in the city of Portsmouth.
In order to have this before us, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to adopt the ordinance. It's been duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, the motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to Item 17317, adoption of an ordinance to appropriate certain funds. Would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to appropriate $33,675 of telephone commission revenue in the FY 2018 General Fund operating budget for use by the sheriff's office.
In order for us to have this matter before us, is there a motion to adopt?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries, which brings us to Agenda Item 17318, which is the adoption of an ordinance to accept certain grant funds and to appropriate the same. Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of the ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to accept $84,051 received via the Circuit and General District Courts and to appropriate said amount in the FY 2018 General Fund for use by the sheriff's office for items needed to support the sheriff's office training academy.
In order for us to have this matter before us, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion to adopt the ordinance that's been duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that carries.
Yes.
Item 17319, which is the adoption of another ordinance accepting certain grant funds. Would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting funding in the amount of $1,054 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2018 Behavioral Health Care Services Fund for use by the Department of BHS for daily living activities, 20 functional assessment training.
In order for us to have this matter before us, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries. Our next item is Item 17320, which is the adoption of an ordinance accepting certain grant funds from the state. Madam Clerk, would you read that, please?
Yes, sir. Adoption of an ordinance accepting an opioid prevention, treatment, and recovery grant in the amount of $89,298 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2018 Behavioral Health Care Services Fund for use by the Department of BHS to provide peer recovery and other services to assist those fighting opioid addiction.
In order for us to have this on the table for us to discuss, is there a motion to?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the ordinance. It's been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to Item 17321, which is the acceptance of another grant and appropriating the grant funds. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an opioid treatment and recovery grant in the amount of $113,759 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2018 Behavioral Health Care Services Fund for use by the Department of BHS to provide treatment and other services for individuals with a diagnosis of opiate use disorder.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion to adopt the ordinance that's been duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. The motion carries. Which brings us down to new business, Item 17322, boards and commissions, and I'll call on Vice Mayor Page, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to move for a reappointment to the Portsmouth Housing Authority, Ms. Rita Roberts.
You want to do, you want to do these as separate motions?
We can do them all at once, if you're okay with that.
Okay, that's fine.
And for appointment to the Community Criminal Justice Board, Honorable Judge Brian Mills and Renato Myers. To the Economic Development Authority, Ms. Tracy Link.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to make these three appointments and one reappointment. Did I get that right?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries. Which brings us to Item 17323, items submitted by council members and Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, I have two, two issues. The, in our mailboxes were two letters. One, want some follow-up at our next council meeting. If there's no objection from council, we received a letter from, I believe this is the representation of the port request about the property tax refund. Can we have some further discussion on that in our next meeting by either our city attorney or the commissioner of revenue regarding the refund that's being requested? I know that's different from when we last had our conversation on this issue.
Okay. Any objection to that? We'll put that on the Monday night council meeting next, which will be in August.
August 7.
And also, the other letter is the July 12 letter from Mayor Rowe to Mr. David Tench regarding GPDC and the request to appoint the mayor and the city manager as directors on GPDC Board of Directors. The issue here is that if they're going to represent council, there needs to be an action by council, and there hasn't been any action by council appointing either those persons. And one council person cannot appoint persons to a board. That has to be an action of council. So I'm requesting that there be a proper vote on this so that it is done in proper order. Also, before a vote could be taken on this issue, I would like to get some update from our city attorney regarding the legal structure of GPDC, if there's no objection from council, because before we can move forward with acting with the present structure, as the letter indicates, we should be aware of what that present structure legally is. I would hope that the city attorney could give us either some type of resolution that council passed in previous councils, given the authority for the persons to serve in this capacity representing the city council and GPDC. I understand that persons have said that that exists, but I know I haven't seen any documentation in that regard. And so I don't know how we could move forward with placing persons on a board that we do not even have documentation that it legally exists. So if there's no objection from council at our next meeting, if that information can be presented, and also if it is proper, like to hear from our city attorney, if it's proper for council persons to appoint other councils, to council members to boards without city council action as a whole.
Thank you, Dr. Whitaker, for bringing this up. As you know, the Greater Portsmouth Development Corporation is a nonprofit, non-stock corporation, and as such, its board makes the appointment, not the city council, not the housing authority, nor the Portsmouth Partnership. And as you read that letter, it doesn't say that those two people that you reference are being appointed. It says that they're willing to serve. But the chair will entertain a motion to ratify the fact that the mayor, me, and the city manager, Dr. Patton, are willing to serve as the city's representative, representatives on GPDC, if so elected by the GPDC board. So move. Second. A motion, and it's duly seconded. Any discussion?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Once again, if it's the case that the board has a third representation from PRHA, Portsmouth Partnerships, and the city, if that's the case, then why in this letter would the city be requesting from one entity for permission for persons to be placed on a board? And also, in that regard, you are making a recommendation of an appointment to the board. It's not that the council is appointing them. My point is that you are making a recommendation on the behalf of council, which council has not voted on for that recommendation to be made. And so that's the point of my inquiry. And also, regardless of whether the council votes tonight to move forward with what you've requested, I think that there still needs to be documentation presented to council showing the legal structure of GPDC. And if there's no objection from council, I would like to still see that documentation showing the council approve the one-third interest from all of those parties.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Simmons.
Yes, sir. To speak to Dr. Whitaker's request, I'm fine with his request. In fact, I think that if we looked at the original founding resolutions of GPDC from 19 whatever it was, we would see that the city is to be represented by the mayor and/or the council, the city manager, whomever that is. It's not about Lydia Patton and John Rowe. It's the title of the people. And so I would encourage all of us to be familiar with those documents and second his recommendation.
And just for clarity.
Let's make sure that, anybody else want to discuss on that?
Just for clarity, Ms. Simmons, I do not doubt that there's a document that says that that's to be the representation of GPDC. My issue is that you're putting the cart before the horse. There's no documentation that I have seen, nor has been presented to council, even indicating that council voted for that type of representation, nor inclusion and inclusion on GPDC. What you're saying is just what GPDC documentation shows. What I'm asking for are records showing that there was some type of vote by council to even be a part of GPDC and that legal structure. That's what I'm asking.
Thank you, sir.
And that's what I'm asking for the city attorney, if there's no objection from council, for the city council to see that type of documentation.
You had two points, and that's a, I don't think there's any objection to have that on the next agenda. Let's take the motion that's on the floor, which has been duly seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Motion carries six, one. And Dr. Patton and Mr. Ashby, if you would get the documents at the next meeting. Councilwoman Simmons?
Yes, sir. New topic. Things to do in the next two weeks before we meet again. Of course, there are Thursday concerts every Thursday at Portside from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. On July 27th this week is the Good Life Band, and next week, August 3rd, is Black Velvet. On Saturday, August 5th, you are going to be worn out. You may start the day with a 10K run or a 5K run walk. This is the Cutter 10K, the Third Annual. This is to benefit, it's all in honor of the Coast Guard's birthday. It will start here at the Portsmouth Pavilion and run all around downtown. There's a children's side, a children's run walk, Quarter Mile Dash, all sorts of activities. Also, on Saturday, August 5th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. until noon, we will have another recycle day, this time at Icy Norcom High School, not at Lowe's. So from 9:00 to noon on Saturday, August 5th, you can recycle everything from paint to transmission fluid to clothes. They're also asking folks to bring school supplies to donate to the Portsmouth Schools Foundation, if you're so inclined, and that's 9:00 a.m. to noon. And then on that same Saturday, August 5th, and Sunday, August 6th, we will have the 31st Annual Gospel Rama going on at Portside on the water stage from 3:00 to 9:00 p.m. Saturday and Sunday, so it'll be a little cooler in the late afternoon. There are lots of gospel acts and singers, and it's always a fun time, 3:00 to 9:00 on August 5th and August 6th at Portside. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, this brings us to Item 17324, which is Report on Pending Items. Dr. Patton, are there any pending items? Okay, thank you. Which brings us to non-adjunct speakers. And Madam Clerk, would you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, city council's rule requires a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. And our first speaker is Mr. Barry Randall, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, members of City Council, Barry Randall, Prentice Park Section of Portsmouth. I pass some information out to you guys. I'm just going to briefly talk about it, and then my, another citizen, a partner in the community, she's going to come behind me and give a more in-depth outlook on this presentation. But I wanted, I wouldn't dare come down here without first thanking you all, because you all have given me a good problem, which is also a bad problem, but is definitely a good problem, and that is, you all have really boosted business for me in the restaurant. So I want to thank Deputy City Manager Jones, City Manager Dr. Patton, City Attorney Solomon Ashby, Councilwoman Simmons, and Lisa Lucas Burke, our Vice Mayor, Page Chair, and especially my Mayor John Rowe for coming and doing the ribbon cutting this past Friday at DePage, at DePaJoes, which is the first two letters of my grandson's name, Daniel II, Paris Blue, and Josiah. That is the name, DePaJoes. A lot of people say Papa Joe. I don't care what you call it, just bring me your money. But nevertheless, we're open seven days a week, 12 noon to 7:00 PM, and we're located at 3420 Deep Creek Boulevard. And also, because you all know that I like helping a lot of other people, this is just a suggestion to all of you all up here, spe, oh, and I also want to thank the Economic Development Staff, because they was there as well. But this may be something that you guys can do in your spare time to help Portsmouth businesses, because I promise you all, we've been open for a month. And also, on behalf of my partner, he was trying to get here, my business partner, Antonio Van from Virginia Beach, he thank you, thank you all as well. But we was open for a month, and we have not been this busy. On this past Friday, I had to throw away everything that I had on, including my shoes. When I got home, I was drenched and soaked and hurting. And Saturday morning, we was working and very busy, and on Sunday, we was busy, and on yesterday was busy, and on today, I closed a little early so I could get here, and I had people standing out there like, brother, this is false advertisement. We're hungry. So you guys have really helped us, because a lot of people were saying, you know, how do you know about us? We get a lot of city workers coming down there, and they said, oh, we seen it on John Rowe's page, we seen it on Lisa Lucas Burke's page, we seen it on Councilwoman, on Simmons' page. And I'm like, wow. So maybe in you all's off time, you may want to highlight a business, just go there and share it on Facebook, and it will bring business to that, that local business establishment. So from the depth of my heart, I thank you. My body is angry with you, but my pocket and my wallet says thank you. What you have before you guys is a proposal that some citizens and I that we're working on, because I was kind of upset that a delegation from our city had to travel all the way over to Norfolk just to christen the new ferry. And I'm like, that is so unfair. Like, we, you know, this, we, we, we have the port. But anyway, what you all have before you guys is a Ferris wheel. Many of you all may say, well, what is a Ferris wheel? You know, how is that going to bring great revenue? It's going to bring a lot of revenue. Again, my partner, she's going to come and share the information with you all. We did our homework, we invested our own money with the specs and the graphics and what have you, and did our homework. We really would like to work with you guys if you all would take the opportunity to take us serious, because this is the view you see sitting from Norfolk. And if you in Norfolk, this will cause you to want to come to Portsmouth, because it's family-friendly. And if you bring your children and your family over here, guess what? You also going to go and get something to eat. And I know that you all are in the process of working to build a little restaurant station over by Portside, so this will also help boost sales. And also, we're not just talking about a Ferris wheel, we're talking about three or four other little attractions as well, so that it can be something to do for everyone. And again, you know, the tax revenue is there to make this thing work. Don't get afraid of the price when you look at the bottom dollar, about $4 million. We paid that much money for the pines. And again, the pines property is sitting there and is not doing anything for our city. And again, many of you all know, for the couple, three, four years, I was one of the ones that advocated for a center. And I want to reiterate to this council, because I think some of you all are kind of losing focus, we advocated for a center in Truxton. We never advocated for 33 acres. So we would really encourage you all to explore getting that property off of the city ownership and getting it back on the tax roll. Give the people of Truxton a, a center for the children, but most importantly, let's get something going for downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Mr. TJ Wright, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and the other government officials we have today. My name's TJ Wright. I'm a resident of Portsmouth. I live in Glenchilla. I'm a practicing attorney here in Portsmouth. My office is in Portsmouth, and I frequent the Portsmouth Court System. What I'd like to address today is kind of some of the limitations that we have in our juvenile courts, and what I would propose at the council, I would at least look into, and hopefully we can develop an initiative. The school-to-prison pipeline is something that is serious, and it's becoming more and more talked about throughout the nation. I'm not going to talk about how do this, how do students get into the court system, but what can we do as the courts to, to fix that problem? The best way for me to go through this is to discuss this through an example. You have a child, a young man, who is found to have stolen a candy bar from your local convenience mart. It's a misdemeanor, it's not a violent crime, it's not a, all crime is serious, but in the, the spectrum of crimes, it's not a serious crime. He comes into the juvenile court system, his first contact with a judge. The judge, in his ruling, has a number of options available to him. It ranges from to defer a disposition, meaning that he doesn't find him guilty, and allows the child to go back and prove himself, and then after a period of time, they dismiss the charge, all the way up to committing him to the Department of Juvenile Justice, which could have a length of stay from two months all the way up into his 21st year of life. What we've run into here in Portsmouth is that we have a catch-and-release program. What typically will happen is a juvenile will be put on supervised probation, told that he needs to be on, he or she needs to be on good behavior for six months to a year, and at the end of that time, that this matter will be dismissed. The problem is that this child initially stole a candy bar. Now he's under a microscope, and he signs a rules of conduct that says that he's not to skip school, not to get any problems at school, not to miss curfew, not to consume alcohol, tobacco, or marijuana, all of which are very common items and issues that children have today. So essentially, we've set this child up for failure. We've given him no guidelines, we've given him no structure, nothing for him to basically improve his station in life. The only thing we've done is we've put him under more scrutiny. So what happens is he picks up a probation violation, and he ends up coming back to court. Now he started with one charge, and now he's got another one. The judge is more upset. And this cycle continues. The reason it continues is that we don't have a middle ground here in Portsmouth. And by that, I mean, we don't have our own detention center, and we don't have options for what's called a post-dispositional program. A post E program is a structured program which typically lasts for six months, 180 days. It's an incentive-based program whereby the offender is given an individual case management. It's not like probation. It's where they have structured therapy, they have individual and family therapy, they have group counseling that would include anger management, substance abuse, empathy enhancement, so why am I doing this wrong? In addition, they'll give them life skills. They're taught by, by teachers and facilitators that would be local to Portsmouth, so that they wouldn't have to have a break in their education, because right now, we use Chesapeake. So we have a Portsmouth student that goes to Chesapeake for some time, and we're not able to use the post E program there. This is pre, or pre-detention, so we have a break in their education. So we would have a local facility here where they would be able to have that continuity in their education. Not only this, but it's an incentive-based training, it's an incentive-based structure to rehabilitate these children. So what happens is, if they perform well, they have the option to be released early from the program. If they perform well, they have the option to have community outings, they have the option to have home passes. And most importantly, what happens is it gives them a sense of accomplishment once they're done. And at the conclusion of the training and this program, this rehabilitation process, which is six months long, they have a mental health assessment, so that we can provide ongoing care through our Department of Human Services, and there's transition planning. Today, council, you voted in close to three-quarter of a million dollars for grants. The lack of funding to take care of our children, I don't think is a reason not for us to investigate this. I think that there are grants that are out there that would help us do that within our city, and I think we owe it to the youth today in order to investigate this further. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, Attorney Wright. Thank you for the presentation.
Yes, sir.
So are you aware that there are grant fundings available for this type of program?
I believe that there are. Yes, sir.
At the, at the state, federal?
Yes. So in the court services, or under, this would fall under the court service unit here, which I believe under the fiscal year 18 budget for the city has a $1.5 million allocation to it. But I do know that there are multiple facets within the juvenile system. They fall under the court services, but they also have their own entity. So there's a number of regulatory agencies that would fund this specifically. I don't know about our own housing facility, but so that we could use the post-dispositional program in other localities like Chesapeake, Norfolk, Virginia Beach, or Newport News. The problem that we have right now, specifically for Portsmouth, is that a lot of the therapy and the training that they have are going to be family-based therapy. So if we have a single family, or a family with one working parent or one parent that's at home, that's asked to participate in these therapies or these trainings, to expect them to travel, to take off work, to travel to Chesapeake, I think is a burden itself. And if they rely on public transportation to get to Chesapeake, the Chesapeake Courthouse from downtown Portsmouth, I, I think is just going to be a bridge too far. You'd have to go through Norfolk in order to do that through the public. I, I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is, is that something that the city manager can look into if there's no objection from council, just so that we can have a discussion on that issue as well in the future?
It is. What's the desire of council? Okay? Okay. Dr. Patton, would you look into the, to the matter of grants? And we do have a request for the floor, and that's Councilwoman Lucas.
Yes, Attorney Wright, thank you for bringing that presentation. I think you're bold to bring that, because we need to see studies that know that, you know, what our youth are, are being involved, that it's not just, you know, black kids, and it's not just white kids, that, that we're, you know, concerned about all of our youth, and any kind of way that we can redirect that prison-to-pipeline, you know, to giving them a better future, I'm all for it. So I was gonna, I follow the recommendation of Councilwoman Whitaker to have us to do further certi, studies on this, so that we can see what we can do to bring this to happening and enforcement. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, sir.
And also, Ms. Mayor, also, I appreciate you bringing up the school-to-prison pipeline. As we know, that's part of it, a major part of that, the research shows, comes from the reading levels of our children. And I think that's an issue, too, that council has to really reconsider our funding of the schools. And so I see this as something, as well as funding our schools. But both of those are issues that are within the purview of council to make a serious deal, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
I agree. Thank you, doctor.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. You may be seated. Dr. Patton?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Mr. Doug Weller is our grants officer. And daily, we are working and searching for grant opportunities. We also seek and reach out to partners within the city, to include agencies that are specifically responsible for youth programming, including the court agencies, and seek to partner with the schools for grant opportunities. In the last two weeks, we've become the first city in Hampton Roads to actually form a partnership with a research institution for grant opportunities, because most of the grants now, one agency cannot pursue million-dollar grants. You have to have a research partner, which now the city of Portsmouth has. For the past year, we have been working with Old Dominion University, and we're about ready to bring back the research from our Balance and Crime Initiative to be presented to council, that will shed a lot of light on areas of which collectively, we need to seek grants to address some of the issues that we have. So what you're asking for will be coming forth in the work that we're collectively doing now.
Thank you. Dr. Whitaker, you've got the floor.
Dr. Patton, I think this recommendation is specifically targeting a post-disposition program. And so I, I know that the Grants Department is active. I'm just curious if there's some that target those type of programs specifically.
Thank you. All right. Our next speaker is Ms. Donna Si, and ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. My topic tonight regards today's Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission meeting, and how I was affected by this meeting. Before I give the assessment of the meeting's structure, I need you to understand where I have obtained my authority to address my assessment. Principles of Liberty 10 argues that the God-given right to govern is vested in the sovereign authority of the whole people. In our Virginia Constitution, Article 1 of the Bill of Rights, Section 2, it reads that "All power is vested in and consequently derived from the people, that magistrates are their trustees and servants, and at all times amenable to them." Section 3 reads "Government instituted for common benefit," that government is or ought to be instituted for the common benefit, protection, and security of the people, nation, or community. "Of all the various modes and forms of government, that is best which is capable of producing the greatest degree of happiness and safety, and is most effectually secured against the danger of maladministration. And whenever any government shall be found inadequate contrary to these purposes, a majority of the community hath an indubitable, inalienable, and indefeasible right to reform, alter, or abolish it in such a manner as shall be judged most conducive to the public will." Let's review the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission meeting's structure, the agenda, and why I'm concerned about the danger of maladministration. Looking under old business, when the engineer gave his report on 3930 Burton Point Road, he needed to have a PowerPoint of the information he was going to share along with any of the wetland issues that needed to be addressed, and also the seawall repair. Next, the hammerhead crane question came up. That was not on the agenda for a follow-up report. Under new business, there was no acknowledgement for a report from the port. There was no acknowledgement to address the Jordan Bridge issue. There was no acknowledgement to address the new work group of the military institutions. There was no acknowledgement of announcements. So information could be shared about various social news to benefit those in attendance. Lastly, the financial report needs to be geared to describing how the money is spent in an attached report form, along with a statement of net position. The government is or ought to be instituted for the common benefit, protection, and security of the people, nation, or community. "Of all the various modes and forms of government, that is best which is capable of producing the greatest degree of happiness and safety, and is most effectually secured against the danger of maladministration." When I witness information left out of the agendas, I am not happy, and I don't feel safe with this government that is taxing me without any communication at all about how I want my money spent in this city. Decisions are made with no one, including me and others, in the decision-making of this city. We can't even get comprehensive information at any of the meetings. Does any elected have a conversation with me about what's going to be voted on before it is voted on? No. For my happiness and safety, I'd like to be informed of the military work group- of the military work group meetings, so I can attend. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. And our next speaker and our last speaker is Ms. Pam Phillips. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name's Pamela Phillips. I'm a resident of Portsmouth. I actually live in Parkview. I came up here. I'm the secondary person for the vision of Portside that was presented to you earlier. What I... The purpose of this is just to kind of look at the potential that's out there, to bring people from Norfolk, from outside of Portsmouth, into Portsmouth, even as day tourists, to actually spend money to, you know, have attractions that are family-oriented, but also, you know, go down High Street, get something to eat, support the local businesses. The two properties that are currently non-occupied and are listed as tax-exempt on the city's registry are the Old Holiday Inn property. There's a picture taken yesterday from One Crawford. And the address is actually 8 Crawford Parkway. It's 3.6 acres. The assessed value for just the land is $2.1 million, which at our current real estate tax rate is an income of just under $28,000 that we're not utilizing at this point. The second property is actually adjacent to Portsmouth Pavilion. Again, it's a vacant lot that has no trespassing signs. There's nothing in... on the lot. The physical address is 1 Harbor Center Court. It's 2.4 acres. It has a assessment value of just over $2 million. And so, again, $27,000 just in real estate revenue that... for tax revenue that the city is losing every year that it goes vacant. The proposal includes a 35-meter Ferris wheel, which is a height of 114 feet, has 108 seats, has a theoretical capacity of 28... or 720 people per hour. Both sites can actually accommodate a 60-meter Ferris wheel that has a lot greater throughput as far as persons are concerned. There's just engineering that has to go into that before that can even be considered as a proposal. A Ferris wheel that, again, can hold 62 people at the same time, has a theoretical throughput of 1,500 people per hour. Mary, go around, sorry. Teacups, again, 60 adults, 1,500 people per hour. And then the final one is called a disco. It's more geared towards teenagers, young adults, tweens. 24 people at a time. Hourly capacity is 600. There's actually a layout of all of these to scale on the proposed sites. Both sites include a bazaar, so where there could be vending as far as food is concerned, concessions, but also games and other activities. The total equipment cost is just under $4 million. And for tax revenue purposes, we're talking per year just on the equipment is 20... just under 20... or $88,000 a year. And that's not including everything that would be generated. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes our agenda, and this meeting is adjourned.